I'd like to bring the City Council meeting for September 27th to order. If I could get Councilmember Andrusik to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes ma'am, please place your hand over your heart and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Cheers ma'am.
Linda, roll call.
Councilmember Andrusik.
Here.
Councilmember Mercado.
Here.
Vice Mayor King.
Here.
And Mayor Sierra.
Here.
Thank you very much. Do we have any reordering of the agenda tonight?
No ma'am.
Alrighty. We'll move on to public comment. This is your opportunity to speak about anything you want to speak about for three minutes, whether it's on the agenda, not on the agenda, comments, something you'd like to see done in the town, something we're doing well in the town. We've got a lot tonight, so if anybody else wants to get up. I'm going to start with Jerry Domingos. Take your time.
Oh, I will. (LAUGHING). Well, a couple of weeks ago, I came to talk to you about Special Olympics and people who have disabilities. And thank you for all you have done. And now I'm looking for, I want to tell you, give you an example why it's so important that you do consider this position that I'm asking for you to think about doing. I asked you to think about considering a partial position addition to the Buellton-Salvang Recreation Departments. I am here now to offer an example.
Jerry? If you could speak a little in the microphone, they're having a hard time hearing up here. Speak more into the microphone, please.
You're okay.
There you go. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. We want to hear you.
Okay. I want to give you an example of the benefits of the continuity, the support, and the professionalism that recreation departments provide. My example is a man named Alex Posada. He's been the Santa Maria Recreation Department Example Director for many years. I've known him 30 to 35 years and had both children and adults in adaptive programs that he manages. And he's been especially supportive of Special Olympics. Santa Maria Rec Department with his leadership has always taken in the San Ynez Valley. But they're no longer going to do that. We were part of what was called North Santa Barbara County Special Olympics. When I look, our recreation departments have been outstanding to help us get Special Olympics started again in San Ynez Valley. A lot of people thought that Special Olympics had been here forever. It was here 35 years ago, and then we kind of got lost in the shuffle, and we've had to have our athletes go somewhere else to Alex's programs in Santa Maria and Mont Oak. If you look at this schedule that our recreation departments are providing now, I really wonder how they do it. They hustle, they work, you don't see people sitting around. They answer the phone promptly. If they aren't there at the moment, they get right back to you. But I think they deserve, well, I know they need, it's absolutely vital to have that link to Special Olympics major. Right now, they tell us what to do. We need a voice for ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Caroline.
It's easier than sitting down twice.
I was helping out two weeks ago. Anyway, I really appreciate that.
Carolyn, please.
Members of the Buellton City Council, thank you for allowing me to speak with you. My name is Caroline, and I support President Trump because of his work to restore our economy. President Trump and his administration continue to work with tireless dedication and commitment to solving our nation's most important and consequential problems. One of these problems was our nation's very high unemployment rate, which meant many people had no job, especially in the areas of mining, logging, construction, and manufacturing. As reported in the Washington Examiner, statistics showed that 201,000 new jobs were created in August, beating economists' expectations. The unemployment rate in August was 3.9 percent, close to the 44-year low of 3.8 percent hit earlier this year. President Trump achieved this by cutting taxes and regulations, among many other things that follow the Republican model for economic growth, similar to President Reagan in 1981. The unemployment rate for Hispanic Americans reached new lows in June and again in July. Household incomes among Hispanic Americans has just set a new record for improvement, and African-American unemployment rate, unemployment reached the lowest rate ever in recorded history. World history shows that when many people are out of work for long periods of time and the economy is in a recession, it is a very dangerous and unpredictable situation for the entire country. People who want to work but cannot find a job after too long, they become frustrated, angry, and desperate. Donald Trump's willingness to run for president and his resolve to implement Republican economic principles has avoided a potential economic and unemployment crisis for our country. He and his cabinet and administration deserve great credit for their selfless dedication and perseverance, protecting the gains already made and continuing to stabilize our economic health. He does this even while he faces an extremely hostile political climate, resistance and obstruction by congressional Democrats, and even dishonest members of his own administration who fake their loyalty and work to sabotage and block his efforts. Please support President Trump. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you, and may each person listening have a very good evening.
Thank you very much, Caroline. Alrighty, our next speaker, Richard Kuznich. Nice to see you.
Oh, thank you. Madam Mayor and City Council, my question is about safety, about the crosswalks on 246. Now, a couple months ago, I had asked about the crosswalk at Sycamore. There's no markings on it, no hash marks. Now, you were supposed, or they were going to talk to Caltrans about it. Was anything agreed upon that they would mark it, or?
Why don't you go ahead and then we can ask Rose.
And the other thing, in front of Ranch Club Estates, there's a crosswalk with the lights just like down at Sycamore, and it has the hash marks. You cross that street at night, it is dark, and it's several times I've watched people, myself, crossing the street, cars come right up, go right through the intersection. Those little lights on the side really don't attract any attention. When you go up to Salvang, the crosswalk they put in there by the park, those lights are bright, and when they come on, you know, it grabs people's attention. So I think it would be nice if they had those kind of lights here at those two crosswalks and that crosswalk marked. I mean, because that one crosswalk, kids from school have to cross there to get over to Oak Elementary, and like I said, it's dangerous, I mean, on 246. It's a wide street, and they just, I don't know why they don't see, see you coming.
Me neither.
Yeah. That's my.
Thank you very much. Is it okay if I ask Rose real quick what the status is? I know we're doing safety bouts for schools and...
Right. The city does have an application in with Caltrans for the intersection of Highway 246 and Sycamore. So we have a whole sidewalk and crosswalk improvement project that's going in there with better flashing lights as far as notification. So that's in design right now. There isn't an interim project, a striping project, that Caltrans is allowing. We're going through a full process.
We can't do anything without their okay on 246.
Right. Anything on 246, so if we want something else in interim, that's a whole separate permit application and process we need to go through. So right now, we're putting in, doing the work for a full improvement project.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Henry Alvarado.
Madam Mayor and City Council members, I'm here to ask for support, and I think I have it from the city, for Measure A, which is the partial tax that we're, that's being requested to help support our schools here in Buellton. The partial tax will be $99 a year, or 28 cents a day, and it will help support our schools and provide the funds necessary to restore our music program, lower our class sizes, support our science, technology, and engineering courses that we have, and more to enhance the support of our students at their school. And if you don't realize, or don't know, our two schools have been designated as primary state schools. We've won countless number of awards. We also have three teachers that have been selected as Teachers of the Year, so the faculty there does a great job with the funds that are available, but we need more additional funds, seeing as the state has taken away more money from us, and our next governor may do the same thing. So Measure A is very important to us. There's also an exemption to this measure for those of us that are over 65, that we can opt out from this, and there is a super form, and that can be picked up at the district, and we'll have them available as we canvass the area, that can be filled out to exempt you from, exempt us, the 65-plus citizens of this city, to opt out from the tax. But vote first and make sure that the measure passes. There is accountability, where there'll be a citizen oversight committee assigned to monitor the funds. The funds cannot be used for salaries, and also the funds are protected under the law that they belong to the city, they belong to the school district, and the state or the county can't take that away from us. It's for eight years, and so it's very important, and you'll see our committee going out through the city, canvassing the neighborhoods and explaining the importance of Measure A to help support our schools, and to make sure that our students have everything that's necessary to make them very successful in going to high school and college, and possibly coming back and being sitting up there in the City Council or something, okay? And also ask the candidates who I see there to support Measure A and help our schools become even more proficient. And I'll leave some of the flowers here with Mark, that way you can see the bullet points that are set up for the measure.
Thank you, Henry.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, our biggest problem with Measure A is that seniors on fixed incomes would normally vote no, they don't have kids in school anymore, but this one has to pass by two-thirds.
Yes.
And the parents really want it, and we need to get everybody in town voting for it, even if you're able to sign a waiver after the fact.
Yes.
Yeah.
Very important. There's confusion about that a little bit.
Yeah.
But.
It is, but we still need senior votes in order to get the funding for our schools. Okay, thank you. John Sanchez, step on up.
Madam Mayor and City Council, I just wanted to thank everybody for the presentation on the avenue. The city did a good job getting everything together. The avenue was in excellent shape, and it made us proud to be from Buellton, and Kathy and it together, and Christina Bate. And while we're talking there, I actually talked with Michael Reagan, and it was a nice presentation and everything. And what I thought would be a good idea would be possibly getting some kind of a kiosk or a place to have another presentation of the Young Americans Foundation, the Reagan Foundation, and something kind of like a, like a kiosk or something, that we could borrow artifacts maybe from them and have like a, just a little kiosk, it was like a kiosk or a small presentation to kind of advertise for their foundations and show them, you know, the pride we have for Ronald Reagan and his contribution and pride, and just, it would be something that somebody could get together and work with. I talked, I actually talked to Caroline, and she thought it might be a good idea, and if someone else wants to talk about it, then it'd be something fun to do, and just an idea. But again, it made us proud to be from Buellton, and the avenue looked excellent, and everybody.
It was a beautiful day.
Thank you.
It was a beautiful day. Thank you. And I do believe the Historical Society has a marker with Reagan and...
It's on the corner.
The whole avenue, but yeah. It's wonderful to get good ideas. Thank you. I have one more speaker. If anybody else wants to get up and throw out a slip real quick, this is your opportunity. Otherwise, Kathy Reiman, step on up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I guess I'm going to echo a little bit of what John was saying, but I just want to thank the city for all of their help as well for Saturday's celebration. It was a great turnout, a beautiful day, the sun broke through, so that was, had us a little worried early in the morning out there, but we're always thanking your crew and Public Works, they've got the banners up in time for the avenue to look nice, and the grounds look beautiful. The avenue, I think, looks the best it's looked in a long, long time. But again, thank you for all of your support and participation as well and partnership on this event. It takes, takes us all to kind of make these things work, and I appreciate us all coming together, but that's it. Thank you.
Don't forget the Boy Scouts.
Oh, we had a lot of people to thank. I know if I started now, I'd probably leave somebody off, so I'm not going to name names, but it took a village, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. I don't have any other speaker slips, so we're closing public comment, moving on to the consent calendar. We've got four items. We've got the minutes of September 13th, 2018, regular City Council meeting, list of claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal year 2018-19, the financial report for the fourth quarter ending June 30th, 2018, and the monthly treasures report, August 31, 2018. Gentlemen?
Madam Mayor, I couldn't stay in from the minutes of the meeting because I was in Long Beach.
Okay. Do you want...
And motion for approval. I'll second.
Okay. Linda?
Okay. Vice Mayor King.
Aye.
Councilmember Mercado.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrusik.
Aye.
And Mayor Sierra.
Aye, thank you. This is the best part of the whole night, I get to do another proclamation. This is declaring September 27th, 2018, as the Hancock Promise Day in Buellton. Greg Pensa, I'm going to come down and we'll read the plaque, but I just wanted to thank, I'm not sure everybody, although it looks like you're starting fairly young, everybody in Buellton knows what incredible opportunity Hancock gives to students from San Ynez High School.
Okay. Say a couple things, are you going to read the plaque?
Let me read it, and then you can, then you got your, as much time as you want.
Okay.
Okay.
Two minutes or less.
Nah. Nah.
Sure. A lot of work to do.
As long as you want. If you would step up here, please, I can read you this.
You know what, I need to take a picture for... Hang on just a sec.
We'll have somebody take a photo.
Yeah. Can you do it, Richard?
Yep.
Okay.
This is pretty cool. Proclamation declaring September 27th, 2018, as Allen Hancock College Promise Day. Whereas, Allen Hancock College has launched an innovative new program called the Hancock Promise, designed to change the odds for local San Ynez Valley students entering college. And whereas, this program is already having an impact within our community, resulting in a six-fold increase in the number of high school graduates attending Allen Hancock College as first-year students. In fact, 45 students from our valley alone will be among the first cohort of Promise students beginning fall of 2018. And whereas, these students will join many other alums in our city and valley who have launched successful careers and become valuable community leaders, or others who have embodied the college's mantra of "Start here, go anywhere." And whereas, Allen Hancock College's innovative approach to making college both affordable and accessible is now beginning in the fifth grade with a program called Bulldog Bound. Love that. And whereas, in its first year of implementation, Bulldog Bound already provided on-campus experimental learning activities to more than 2,000 fifth and sixth graders within the district, with many more slated to attend this year. And whereas, today, Thursday, September 27th, 2018, is declared the Hancock Promise Day in Buellton, as this program truly illustrates our community's commitment to assist students pursuing academic, transfer, career, and technical educational programs. And whereas, we extend our deep gratitude and thanks to our local donors, business, and education leaders with organizations who have supported this program. We applaud the efforts of college, community, and foundation leaders working diligently to help students experience their first year free at AHC. Now therefore, I, Holly Sierra, Mayor of the City of Buellton, on behalf of the Buellton City Council, hereby honor the Allen Hancock College Promise for their commitment to students in our community. Thank you very much. See you. Please. Please. On Tuesday night, yeah?
Okay, I just have a couple of quick words to say. My name's Greg Pensa, I'm the trustee for Allen Hancock College for the last eight years, and I just got re-elected, no one ran against me, so I'm going to be here another four years. So I have some other people from Hancock here. Guy Walker, who is in charge of our Hancock Promise, we're trying to raise $10 million for an endowment to keep the promise going, so Guy Walker's here. Richard Ellison, who's helping us on raise money for the Hancock Promise. Lee Volker-Cox, who is the president of our foundation, is here, and Phil Hamer, who works in Public Relations, is here, and then our former PR director, Andrew Masada, who's a Buellton resident, is here. So, as you all know, we compete with Santa Barbara City College. And now, to get the promise for Hancock, you have to graduate from a high school in this district. If you go to Santa Barbara, you can't get the Santa Barbara Promise. So part of what we're doing is trying to educate the parents that there's an opportunity to get your two years of college free, first year through the promise, and then the next year will help with the Pell Grants and whatever to get you graduated. And this is a comprehensive program, you have to take 12 units, you have to take a math, you have to take an English, you have to maintain a 2.0, if you fall off the tracks, you don't get it the second semester. There's a counseling incentive, they get early registration. So, San Ynez Valley, 129 percent increase in students overall, and the whole district, 60 percent. So, it's working, and it, we could talk about changing the odds at Hancock, and this changes the odds for sure. Just want to make sure I didn't miss anything. So, we're very grateful for the proclamation. You know, Buellton is part of our district, and like I said, I'm competing with Santa Barbara City College, so it's nice to have something that's going to be a game changer, in my opinion, at San Ynez High School, and we work closely with Scott Corey over there. So thank you very much again.
Thank you very much, Greg.
They want to take a picture of the council. Just, I'll stand behind you.
Okay.
Group photo.
Get us out of the way.
Can we?
Mark, can you take a picture?
Here. Did you want to go search?
No, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're off-sided here.
Come on in, guys.
Little tighter, little tighter.
Head over.
Little tighter, little tighter.
Sideways.
All right.
Record in the way.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you so much for what you did. Thank you, sir.
Buellton, very nice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very darn nice.
Here in the valley.
Linda?
It's not too late for the...
Yeah.
If you're not having...
Oh, it's the last one, so we should be fine.
Okay.
That's why we stopped.
Not this.
Perfect. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Nice to see you.
Thanks, Greg.
Bureau Box 205, way back.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Okay. Public hearings. Do we have any public hearings?
No ma'am.
Councilmember comments slash items. Anybody have anything they want to bring back to council, anything they want to recognize that happened lately?
Just one comment to thank Kathy again. I think it was a great event, and I think what brought it to head was that some people who didn't get to go, and you talked about it...
Do we have any public hearings?
No, ma'am.
Councilmember comments slash items. Anybody have anything they want to bring back to council, anything they want to recognize that happened lately?
Just one comment to thank Kathy again, I think it was a great event, and I think what brought it to head was that some people who didn't get to go, and you talked about it later on with them, they wish they had gone to go because it was done such a great job. So, I wanted to just commend Kathy again.
And for holding it to one hour, I think that kept everyone's attention. And the weather was perfect.
Do you think the Singer Center's lemonade and cookies might have helped a little bit, too?
I don't doubt a bit.
They were good, yeah.
I had a comment, though.
Sure.
I'd like to revisit our amplified music issue because I've been contacted by people as a mountain about, Flying Flags recently had amplified music and it was, I mean, they were, this person lives in Rancho de Maria, and they said they can hear all of the words. I mean, that's a little loud for that, and I think maybe we need to, maybe it could be in the buzz, or, I was telling these folks, we have decibel meters available, and it wasn't that it was, and they are going late, but it's, I think it's the amplified music that's causing the problem.
Yes, and they have certain restrictions, and we'd be happy to bring it back, but they also are building an amphitheater that faces the freeway, and they will have their events there once they get that constructed, but.
And I guess, is it in planning, so they would be able to just look at it if they want to?
Yes, Andrea can.
Yeah, they've provided me a concept of what they're looking at doing, and I've asked them to make some corrections, give me some additional information, and just out for corrections with them, so.
I think it'd be a big help because it's, we're getting, we're going into the winter, and we still have people playing music late in the evening.
We will contact them about that and work with them on the amphitheater and see how that goes, and we can bring it back at any time.
I think maybe before we bring it back, if we'd go out and inspect it and make sure that, you know, their speakers are supposed to be this size, and make sure that they have the right equipment.
Yeah, they do have those restrictions, and if they, we didn't receive any complaints as staff, so thank you for bringing to our attention, and we will investigate it, and we are working for it on the amphitheater.
And, you know, we had an original residence there, and I was recently talking with them, and I said something, and they said, "Well, we've moved from Buellton," you know, it was just, it was too much noise, so they sold their home and moved to another area.
Thank you for bringing our attention, we will address, and if need be, we can bring it back at a future point.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, anything from you? Comments or items? Okay, I just had a couple. Again, the anniversary on the Avenue was really well done, really, you're reaching out to Vandenberg Air Force Base for the flags, it was just very, very well done. And then afterwards, going over to the vintage trailer show, what a blast, those people know how to party over there. I mean, oh my goodness, they didn't have the loud music during the day, but boy, those people know how to party. That was, that was just fun watching, all the decked-out vintage trailers, very festive. I recently, yesterday, took a trip to the Skirball Center with our rec department, and as always, Kyle Abello is, our rec director, is just incredible, very safe feeling with him driving the vehicle, it was very nice. I just want the audience to know, we have Greg Murphy sitting in tonight for Steve McEwen as our city attorney, and Police Chief Schway, it's nice to see you, welcome back.
Welcome inside.
Okay, that's it, moving on then to written communications?
No, ma'am.
Committee reports.
Oh.
Yes?
Would you like to say anything about the veteran's stand-down?
Thank you.
Thank Linda, she reminded me.
We are collecting for the veteran's stand-down again, there's a box at City Hall, thanks to Linda Reed. We are looking for new socks, towels, basically, that's what they need this year, they need some kind of sundries, like toothpaste, toothbrushes, but for the most part, they are very short on towels and socks, so, and they'd like them to be new. So, if anybody is able to just purchase a pair of socks at CVS and drop them in the box at City Hall, yes, thank I, done, taking care of it, wherever else in town you could possibly find a pair of socks. Anyway, we, stand-down is coming up the second weekend in October, and we truly could use some help filling the box and getting it to our homeless veterans. It's, I think we're in, what is it, the sixth year, sixth or seventh year? It's at Santa Maria Fairgrounds, and it's amazing. Vandenberg Air Force Base come over as the veterans get off a bus or walk in, they're given an escort who walks around with them all day long, takes them for medical exams, shots, showers, hair shopping, they get socks, whatever they need, there's a vet on hand for their dogs or their cats, and it's just, it's an incredible experience. So, they always need help, and I appreciate you reminding me, thank you, Mark. There was one other thing I did want to do under items, if I could, I'd like to bring back Sheroes on Second Street, it's the little bike signs. We repaid part of the road by the schools, and I was asked by Mr. Hecker if we could just revisit, they're not painted on the street, I don't know what it would take to get them painted on the street, but we keep talking about safe routes to school, and a lot of kids are afraid to ride their bikes. If we have a biking area marked off on Second Street, perhaps it would be safer.
Why don't we have them on the avenue?
Something to discuss.
No, we have them on Shadow Mountain. When, we have a few on the avenue in different areas.
Yeah, I was standing there last night, I mean.
Yeah, there's green areas and it transitions to Sheroes, yes.
Is that okay to bring back for discussion?
Sure.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Okay, so done with comments and items and stand-downs and Sheroes, written communications?
No, ma'am.
We're getting to committee, please.
Okay.
Councilmember Andresek.
Chomping at the bit.
Pardon me?
You're chomping at the bit.
Your turn.
No, you.
Your turn.
You'd asked.
I did. We went backwards a little bit.
That's okay. DWR has delivered an eye-opening statement of charges, they're revising the 2019 statement of charges for the Central Coast Water Authority, and it's a very large number, and Ray Stokes is meeting, you know, we're trying to negotiate different scenarios, Rose sent us an email earlier, I think we all got it earlier this week, but it's a very significant upcoming charge, they're rearranging how they assess, the state decides to assess districts, water districts, to recover their costs, and so we're looking at the number, I believe, we were anticipating or had budgeted $10 million for the, is it one year or three years, there's a, I think it was a three-year period, and it's coming in at $19 million. So, we're all going to be seeing a statement of charges, which is going to impact our payment to state water. Nothing wrong with the product, it's just the way they allocate the money to keep it going. More to come, but it was, I think that was the first mention of it, this, we were dark for two months, hadn't heard from them, that was not good news. Just wanted to make you aware of it.
Thank you.
Committee reports, yeah.
I did attend the League of Cities down in Long Beach, Rose and I, Rose and I went down to Long Beach. There were some interesting classes there, one of the ones I really wanted to attend was the ethics class, and it was interesting to see some different scenarios or hear some different scenarios from the attorneys that were, people had gotten themselves in trouble on local city councils because of land sales or things of that nature, some things you don't think about, you know, and it was a nice refresher to have that ethics training. The other one was marijuana class that they had during that, and I was there with Steve McEwen, and to say the least, it was very ambiguous. It's kind of in its infantile stage right now in the state of California, there was one gentleman there that was from Sacramento, and apparently they are having a big problem with illegal grows in Sacramento, he said they've, there's over 1,000 cases they have in this, and they have settled with, or prosecuted somewhere in the neighborhood of 300, which is nowhere close to where they should be. However, I think that is something that we're going to have to consider here as well with people that are going to violate the state law, and how we're going to deal with that, so that may come up in the future. There was a good expo there, and to dovetail on what we were talking about on the crosswalks, Rose and I, and one thing that interested me was they had a new style lighting for the crosswalks that is completely in the street, it's, they don't rise up out of the street, they're very bright, you know, something we could maybe convince Caltrans to let us do in some of these areas that we have constantly had a problem with, or an issue with the crosswalks there. And I have not contacted any of them, I don't know if you have, Rose, you have not? No, but I think somewhere in the future, you know, when we're starting to look at these crosswalks, that this is going to be an option for us, because some of the ones that some cities have put in that I've seen, they have taken them out because they're a problem, but this particular style that they've come up with now was very interesting, that it was flush with the road, and the illumination was more straight-up than some of these other ones, and I think that the communities have had a problem with these, because the ones that are above ground, that they flash in the middle of the night, they're coming into people's windows, but this style was very different, and so I think that in a future date, we could look into something like that. I don't think they were that expensive, were they? It's going to be the installation, obviously, is going to be a cost for the city, but.
I didn't get a cost estimate from them.
No.
But the durability was much better than the existing.
Right, because they're not being run over all the time because they're raised up out of the road, so something we should look into, so I got some valuable information.
Thank you, thank you. I had a CAG meeting last Thursday, and I guess the biggest one, I know it's very, very controversial, is this Prop 6 that's out there to repeal SB 1, and Santa Barbara's been very fortunate, we've been able to get the funding to work on the 101 widening. If we lose that funding, it's going to be another 30 years before it's completed, whereas now we're looking at within 10 years. And I guess the, Steve Levignino, who, it was not unanimous, but it was majority voted to support no on 6 at the meeting, Steve Levignino, his comment was, "We're being charged 12 cents a gallon for gas, and if this, if this 6 is, if SB 1 is repealed, do consumers really believe that that 12 cents is going to disappear?" So, this is guaranteed, the lovely politicians up in Sacramento cannot touch this for anything but road repair and road work, and I'm, boy, I'm really hoping that 6 does not pass, and that SB 1 continues, and that in our lifetime, we will see Highway 101 open all the way down. But that was the SB CAG meeting, so, okay. Business items, agenda item number 6, first contract amendment with the Buellton Business Association slash Chamber of Commerce for operation of a visitors' bureau. Mr. Beardzinski.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, the city council on August 9th authorized an initial $50,000 of funding for this fiscal year to the Chamber for operation of the visitors' bureau. The contract amendment reflects the $450,000 money for this fiscal year only, the $50,000 has been applied to web advertising, marketing consultant, media expenses, and other events. The budget as proposed is balanced, so they're not, there's no deficit, they're proposing to spend $450,000 and no more than that. The, I did talk to Kathy Vreeland, and the additional money for other events is going towards the Avenue Flags dedication and Winterfest, and that was about $4,400. So, that's, anything left over from the Avenue rededication will be applied towards Winterfest. Their current budget does show a negative amount to date, but that's typically normal since revenues and expenditures and timing of revenue receipts, just like our budget, may not come in on a timely basis. So, at the end of the year, we'll be balanced, but during the year, it fluctuates either above or below. So, we're recommending that the city council receive the proposed budget and approve the first amendment to the service contract and authorize city manager to execute the contract, and we're available to answer any questions.
Terrific. First of all, any questions? I do have one question. When we first started this, we started with the $25,000, and then it went up to $50,000 because we were concerned with Winterfest, and that the council had requested $5,000 go to Winterfest. Is that not going to happen then with this?
Why don't we have Kathy Vreeland come up?
Kathy Vreeland.
And she can, she can address that particular issue.
Thank you.
Good evening. So, with the new additional funding, we went ahead and prioritized where that needs to go, which we've outlined, excuse me, outlined and highlighted with marketing and media and web and whatnot. So, whatever was left, we put into, of course, the Avenue event, which didn't take all of the extra money, then we're going to put the additional into Winterfest, what was left of that. If we need more, we can definitely go into our reserve a little bit if we have to, to make that equal to five or whatnot to put into Winterfest, so, you know, we can, we'll still make that happen, we'll still be able to utilize that and see that funding, but I have to make that balance at 450, and those are the areas where we needed to prioritize that money to be spent per contract and where those expenditures need to be, so.
So, you would be able to use reserves or to take out of one fund to make that $5,000 happen?
We can, yeah, I mean, we're close enough, I don't have the total now, we have to wait for all the expenses for the Avenue to come in with rentals and advertising and whatever, but once that's all in, I'll see what's left of that line item, and I can definitely move that back up into Winterfest and then balance it out with reserves or whatnot.
So, not a guarantee?
Not a guarantee, but there's money, I mean, I can, if we need it, I don't, I mean, I don't want to, if we don't need to spend $5,000 extra on Winterfest, then we won't, I mean, we definitely can do it if I have to. You know, Winterfest is coming, I still have to reserve the snow and the rental, so I don't know that that's all going to total, we just know what we've spent last year, and then with the additional traffic flow, if we need to close lanes or have any extra.
Yeah, you had told us at the first meeting that it needed better lighting and better traffic flow.
Right.
And I guess my concern is the safety, we discussed that there were some really unsafe situations going on.
Yep, it's dark.
It's dark, and we need to get that corrected.
Right.
I guess I need the reassurance that that will be corrected.
It will be, I mean, that's what we have, the extra funding that will go into there, and then if we need still more, we can still dip into our reserve if we have to, like, I don't know what the lighting was, will cost, so some of those expenditures are just unknown still, so I have to find that out to know what we're going to need additional, but if this covers it, then great, if not, we can still, we'll definitely make it happen, because it needs to, I mean, it's a growing event and it's dark, so either way, we'll make that happen.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
That's my question.
Okay, I'm going to open this up. I don't have any slips from the public on this agenda item. Seen none?
You know, just, just to review.
You're going to bring it back to council?
For maybe some consideration or thought, we have no way of controlling how much, how much activity, because I remember, I mean, within like an hour and a half, we were wall-to-wall people, and that's very hard to manage and still have an event, you know, the event has its, they have a program, we have vendors, and I don't know that we have any commitment from, the vendors will be there, but I know there was a lot of, lot of lines and requests for certain things that nobody asks about until they're standing in the street at night instead of planning it, and I, I just wonder if, if there's any, if there's any revenue stream that can be had for people that want to come and participate in some, you know, we have, the snow is becoming very expensive, and it's for children to play in, we have the beverages that are sold, I think, are making, you know, helping with revenue, but I'm just not sure that we should just say, "Okay, we're going to do it," and we don't, we don't seem to have any parameters. We want to, we want to be open and friendly, but the people just, if we're going to have traffic through there, it seems like the city needs to make sure that we're, instead of holding visitors' bureau responsible for traffic control, we're attracting people into a public right-of-way. So, I know in having been involved with the expenses, the sheriff has to, they have to recover their cost of deputies. I think, are making, you know, helping with, with revenue, but I'm, I'm just not sure that we should just say, okay, we're going to do it, and we don't, we don't seem to have any parameters. We want to, we want to be open and friendly, but the people just, if we're going to have traffic through there, it seems like the city needs to make sure that we're, instead of holding visitors bureau responsible for traffic control, we're, we're attracting people into a public right of way. So I know in having been involved with the expenses, the sheriff has to, they have to recover their cost of deputies, and if, if, if we find or if they, when they tell us they need X amount of officers or some sort of crowd control for the safety of the roadway, I think that's what I was feeling we were lacking last year, and when an incident happens, it's, it's too late, so. I don't know if there's, maybe we can talk to some other, we may have some feeling from other areas that have herds of people ascending right in the middle of the, of the traffic pattern, and then, then they're gone. So it's really a short window, let's say two hours probably is, is all that's needed, but I think we need some, some, some form of traffic control or crowd control, because everybody's a free, it's a free-for-all. That's, that's my observation. Dave may have dealt with this before.
Oh, yeah, well, I was going to say that Kathy, in her planning stage, could probably take into consideration just closing that section of road, diverting the traffic during that event, and then, you know, as part of your planning, you know, we'll get some deputies to go out there and completely stop the traffic during that. I think that would be a great idea.
I don't want to stop anything, but I mean, you know, there's, there's a light parade that is wonderful, but it kind of takes over and.
Yep, just if I may comment real quick. I'm tired of for closing it down. The issue we have on the Avenue with events is parking, and where do those people then park or go? So it definitely needs to be better thought out, better monitored. We've tried to close one lane around, you know, and have traffic move slowly and have signs at each end and event ahead and all that kind of thing, but we haven't asked at this time yet for traffic control, but it's growing, and we're to the point where we, we need to study this and look at this. So parking is an issue, where they do come on the Avenue and they park everywhere when they come to the event, so it fills up pretty quickly, but I don't, I don't know the answer yet. Maybe it's just putting our heads together. If we do close it, then we just need to find some offset parking for these people that they can still access the Avenue. And that would be going into the neighborhoods, and then you might get them upset because cars are coming into the neighborhoods and parking, I don't know. It just, sometimes that snowballs, not to, no pun intended with the event we're throwing, but sometimes it can snowball and other things, so it just has to be thought out. I mean, Andersons, we could talk with them about parking in their lot, but they, I know they can't hold everybody that does come, so that's the problem with the Avenue. You know, we all want events and have stuff in our downtown, but the infrastructure is, is difficult, and so it makes it challenging, but it's a great venue for this type of event too, so it's worked in that regard as far as if we want a parade and have everything kind of at one area. So I'm, I'm open, open to suggestions, and maybe we can put our heads together to figure out a, a good way of traffic flow or how that should work, or I'm happy to, I don't know if we want to look at the Sheriff Department, if you guys have ideas for us too or whatnot, I mean, we're, maybe that's what we need for this event.
Because we're pretty close in, I'm just thinking that we, the Willemson property that we've used for overflow parking during, it's daytime events now, I don't know if it's available for us to perhaps have people.
Janette will use it?
Yes.
Then you need a shuttle.
And that area.
And then bus.
And then bus, have a, have a, have a bus shuttle, people could bring them to the Avenue, and, you know, for a two-hour event, we might have three, three or four shuttles, and that would, that would get the cars off the Avenue.
I don't know. It's going to be real dark out there, you're hitting a lot of lighting out in the field.
Need some lighting, but I think we had 500 cars in there when we had the Ventners, was it Ventners Festival?
We did, Ventners and Brew Fest, we used Janette's property for, but the event is right there in proximity to that and during the day, so.
I understand.
You know, lighting, all of that brings down more cost, shuttle lighting, that all adds to the, to the cost of event, so.
And that's why I think it needs to recognize there, that, you know, not take it out of your budget. $5,000 doesn't go very far, can't ask you to do that.
Ideas are good.
Yeah, no, that's, I mean, it's brainstorming, right? It's putting our heads together and.
It is a wonderful city event, and it is something that everybody looks forward to, but we just need to make sure it stays safe.
Yeah, exactly.
That's my.
Well, and that's my main thing too, because our name's on it, and, you know, we're hosting this, so we don't want any incidences either, so anyhow, and it's growing, which is great, but then, you know, that's the double-edged sword, it's all good, but then we don't want anybody to get hurt either. So lighting and traffic control, and whether it's slowing traffic down and going to one lane still, or, or, you know, closing it off at certain times of the day, that evening to, you know, make the route, the turnaround go the other way or whatever it might be, that's an option too.
Right. We had, I think, a lot of us were at the, Channel Cities had a, had a meeting, or had a celebration, was it Ventura? Maybe two years ago, it was at Christmas time, and they closed, they closed their main street, and they, and the, the police were everywhere directing people into, into parking areas, and it, you know, they didn't necessarily have a shuttle, but it, it was a foot traffic issue, and I thought it, it was well controlled, and it was a short, like, four or five hours in the event we had.
It would just be identifying those areas where we could park people.
Oh, right.
We happen to own a piece of dirt.
Oh, my gosh, we have a parking lot.
We actually have a piece of dirt where we can park some cars.
That can help. That'll help. We still need a lot more, but that'll help. Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's right, thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
There's 40 cars right there.
Questions, comments, motions?
No, just, they're the ones that have to plan it, and if we, we need to let them know if we want to help support them for, for whatever. I, I think it's a major safety issue that we're, we're preparing for.
Seeing that, then I'll move to accept the first contract amendment for the Bulton Business Association and Chamber of Commerce.
Second.
Councilmember Mercado.
Aye.
Vice Mayor King.
Aye.
Councilmember Andressa.
Aye.
And Mayor Siera.
Aye. Okay. Moving on, Agenda Seven, acceptance of the 2017-2018 Road Maintenance Project. Ms. Hess.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and member City Council. On May 24th of this year, the council approved the contract for road maintenance work with two pavement coatings in the amount of $272,352. This is for the 2017-18 Road Maintenance Project. Consisted of slurry seal and localized R and R throughout city, the slurry seal was through the Sycamore Ranch neighborhood. This included pavement markings, traffic markings, et cetera, including the upgraded school sign and striping around the elementary and junior high school. So this time, the project is complete, and we are filing the notice of completion. The project closed at $263,365.40. With that, staff recommends that the council accept the project and instruct me to file the notice of completion.
All righty. Any questions for Rose?
Good news.
Any questions, comments from the audience? None? Bring it back.
It doesn't need a voice for it, does it? Just a voice?
Yeah.
Comment?
Sure.
Something that you guys just brought up, is that lighting something that we can get Measure A funds next year for to do that in front of Oak Valley School? In the crosswalks? Do we have, is there a grant that you have to apply?
There's Safe Route to School money.
Right, so is that something that we could?
We could use our, our city's share of a local Measure A funds. The Safe Route to School fund portion of it goes through calls every few years, and we're past the last call, but that's something that we can look into for sure in the future.
Because I just think it'd be a good project there, we've had some traffic issues there, but, and just knowing, up at Paso, they do that right there in front of the high school there at War Memorial, Friday nights, it makes a big difference. Something to think about.
Yeah. Councilmember Mercado, are you talking about the in-road?
Yes.
That Councilmember King mentioned? Okay. We can look into that.
Okay. No more comments, questions, a motion?
Just, just consensus is fine.
Everybody accepts it?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
We got consensus.
And then does the, the difference in the two, does that just go back?
General fund.
Okay. So.
City managers report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We filed a notice of intent for a grant application for acquiring the easements for the trail along the river. So Irma worked on that and worked with M and S to get some maps and details on construction costs, so that's going in, so hopefully we'll hear back on that. Good news on the library, I had a meeting along with Solvang with Galita representatives, and they're very positive about Bulton moving forward. I will have some numbers by the end of October, and on the November 8 City Council meeting, I'm hoping to have action by the council to accept moving from Santa Barbara to Galita, and then later that month, Galita will take action to accept hopefully Bulton and Solvang. So it's going to start moving fast because Black Gold needs to be informed by December 1st of the transition, so we can do it by the next fiscal year in, in July. So we, we, we got to start moving fast on it, but I think that.
And we'll have the money, the finances figured out by?
By the end of October, that is correct. And then I will be meeting with the mayor, we're going to have a library tour with Galita of our libraries in end of October as well, and we can invite Vice Mayor King as our library rep as well. So don't have a particular time yet on that.
Do you, you mentioned Black Gold, I just wondered, the cost, we used to hear, there was always pretty much a annual cost of $25,000 for Black Gold, I believe. Any idea, I mean, is that holding, because everything else seems to be going through the roof price-wise?
It's the same cost as what we'd be in Santa Barbara, so there's no, no difference with Black Gold, but I haven't seen the numbers from Galita yet.
Because we're just a subscriber, so it doesn't matter whether we're at Santa Barbara or Galita.
Right.
Black Gold is a cost.
And we're not even a subscriber, it's, it factors into the budget, and then we contribute our amount, and then they get the county per capita, so.
Everyone seems to think Black Gold is well within, with the investment, and I, I haven't heard a number for a while, so I'd hate someone to say, yeah, it went up, you know, it's 50,000 now.
Yeah, I don't know the number, but we'll, we'll have that as part of the budgetary information. I was on a taxpayer association panel yesterday with all the other city managers and the county executive officer. It was very well attended, and we had several questions on housing, community choice energy, sustainability, what our biggest challenge was. Biggest challenge I gave out was Avenue. It's always been the biggest challenge for the city of what to do with it, and then I talked about the solutions that we've moved forward on. So it was very well, well-attended, and hopefully there's, could be a news article on it.
Were straws discussed?
No, straws were not discussed. We only have five questions in 45 minutes, so.
I just wondered.
I put on the website as well as gave to the council the monthly stats for the Sheriff's Department, and as you see, we are now tracking time, and as you see, we are within the budgetary hours that we've allocated. I think one was like 95%, one was 99%. So the tracking is showing that we're well within what budgeted amount that we estimated at the start of the year, and that's what we use at the end of the year to figure out next year's fiscal year budget for the sheriff, but the, right now, they're within the hours of, of what they estimated, so. And that'll be transparency every month will be given to the council and put on the website, so everybody can see that. There is the Bicycle Master Plan for the San Andres Valley. Workshops are scheduled on October 23 in Solvang and October 24 in Bulton. They will be in the evening in the City Council chambers for the respective cities, but more details will be coming on that.
Mark, oh, excuse me, what was the one for here?
October 24th.
Consent for the.
And that, that ends my report, and we'll turn it over.
Thank you, yes, I'll turn it over to Mr. Murphy to announce our closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council will now adjourn into closed session to consider two items of potential initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9 subdivision D4. Thank you.
Have you met everybody yet, Andrew?
Uh, I don't know. I think so, I was going to go around. I think I met Dave before I started even going on.
We'll go, there we go.
Arthur, how's it?
Arthur, nice to meet you, Arthur.
Why don't, why don't we just?
But this is down to talk to you guys sometime.